Good evening. We will go ahead and call to order this meeting to the Noblesville Common Council for Tuesday, December 2nd. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Smith, will you lead us this evening?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I didn't really mean to bag you that much, so apologies. Ms. Lee, will you call the roll?
Mr. Boyce?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Elliott?
Present.
Mr. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Peterson?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Present.
Mr. Smith?
Present.
Mr. Thurston?
Present.
Ms. Wiles?
Present.
Madam President, you have a form.
Thank you. We will move on to the approval of the minutes from our November 18th, 2025 meeting.
We have approved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes from the November 18th, 2025 meeting. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Six. Any abstentions? Two abstentions?
Nope.
Are you in favor?
Yes.
Seven in favor.
I'm in favor.
Or eight in favor, one abstention. Thank you.
Seven in favor. Sorry.
Thank you. Okay, approval of the agenda.
Madam President?
Yes, Mr. Smith.
I move to amend the agenda to add miscellaneous number three, council to receive a report of authorization to reduce appropriations per resolution number RC-1-25.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to amend the agenda to add miscellaneous item number three. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero.
Madam President?
Mr. Davis?
I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Thank you very much. Petitions or comments by citizens who are present. I do not have any slips of paper, but if anyone would like to make a comment, you can fill that sheet of paper out and then hand it to the clerk, and we'll call you up. So we will move on to the mayor's comments.
Morning, Madam President. Uh, morning. Good evening, Madam President and members of council. Sorry, a long day. I'll be very brief. Two quick things I want to quickly say. First of all, I want to thank publicly our Noblesville Street Department. They have done a great job. A little bit earlier in the season than they're used to be out, although the Jensen kids were delighted. I said this morning, the sweet spot for a mayor with small kids is to make sure that we have roads open for commerce to continue, but not open enough that our kids can't sleep in two hours. So I nailed it this morning. Anyways, but they've done a phenomenal job, and I want to thank Noblesville Police Department, who I know some of our members are here today, too. They have commented, I think they only responded to one accident over the past 12 hours in Noblesville, which says a lot. So working really hard. I just want to remind the public, anyone watching, if there ever is an anticipated snowfall, if you live, especially like in the downtown area, and your car's on the street, if you're able to pull it into a parking area or into your driveway, please do, just to allow more access for our plows to get through there. People will pick up on that as time goes on. But just want to publicly thank them as we head into the winter season. Speaking of the winter season, the second thing I will mention, this weekend, we have, and I'm sure Kate Baker will go over it here shortly when she talks about Main Street, but two big events in downtown Noblesville. First of all, Friday night with the lights over Seminary, when we turn on the beautiful lights at one of Noblesville's most historic gems here in downtown, just south of us, in Seminary Park, I think. Look forward to seeing most of you out there, usually freezing our rears off on that event, but it'll be a lot of fun. There'll be hot chocolate and music and just a lot of fun. I'll be reading Twisted Night for Christmas as well, as usual. So looking forward to enjoying a lovely evening on Friday night. And then Saturday evening will be our Holiday and Lights Parade through downtown Noblesville, which has been somewhat of a newer tradition for our community, but I think is one of the most well-attended traditions. Really special event as we head through downtown Noblesville. We have almost a record-setting number of entries this year, too. So be on the lookout for a lot of fun this weekend in Noblesville. I just want to thank all that you guys continue to do. Also thank a lot of our small business owners for Small Business Saturday. We're up very, very early, making sure their doors were open, even on kind of a tough winter day. Small Business Saturday is really important to our community, and it was a huge success again this year. So just thank you for what you continue to do. I also want to thank publicly Kate Baker, who's going to be up here in a minute to give a presentation, but she will be moving on to her next chapter later this month, and I think she's been an incredible steward of that organization, an amazing ambassador for downtown Noblesville and Noblesville as a whole. So I just thank her on behalf of all of us in Noblesville for the work that she has done to promote this amazing community. So with that, happy to take any questions, but appreciate what we do and hope you had a great Thanksgiving.
Any questions of the mayor?
Thank you.
Very much. We will move on to council committee reports and the utilities committee. Mr. Johnson?
Thank you, Madam President. The Common Council Utility Committee met on Thursday, the 20th of November. Meeting was called to order at nine o'clock. Mr. Davis, Mr. Elliott, and myself were present. Mr. Peterson was conspicuously absent from the meeting.
True.
That's a nod to Mr. Elliott, wanted to make sure I pointed that out. The meeting focused on the budget, the 2026 budget, and we'll get into that in much greater detail with Mr. Mago further in the agenda. But the, Mr. Stricker provided a financial review stating that the cash and investments had increased from the beginning year through the end of the third quarter. The folks from Baker Tilly were in attendance, the municipal advisors that we employ, Courtney Holliday and Andre Riley from Baker Tilly were there, and stated that the financial situation in the Utilities Department is very, very strong, especially when compared with other utilities in the state. Again, Mr. Mago is going to go over in greater detail our budget forecast, but as a, as a quick overview, forecasted revenues for 2026 are projected to show a net income for the year. We discussed some of the odor control issues that we all received comments about, and Mr. Mago stated that Webster Environmental, a specialist in wastewater odor control, has been retained, and that both the lift station 20 and the headworks projects are slated to address some of that odor control, those issues. Discussion continued with stormwater fee calculations in light of our residents to the east in Wayne Township that are served by Hamilton Southeast Utilities and Fishers Utilities, and Ms. Holliday and Baker Tilly provided a review of the proposed stormwater rate analysis that we're going to be backcharging to those residents that receive sewer services from southeastern North Fishers. Mr. Mago added that the CS4 project on Ninth Street had been delayed, the sewer construction north on Ninth, and obviously many complaints from citizens about that, but contractor estimated the time and that timelines are being readjusted as construction of the current section is completed. That, the meeting adjourned at 10:53, long meeting with a lot of information, again, mostly circulating around the budget. Any questions?
Any questions of Mr. Johnson?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, David.
Next up is the Finance Committee and Mr. Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. We met November 26th. Aaron Smith, Tom Thurston, and myself. Savannah, Savannah wines gave us an update on the park programs fund year and financial status. And Tom McDonald discussed several fiscal actions, appropriation transfer for subsidy payment to park programs fund, another transfer for new Forest Park Carousel. We're going to hear a little bit about that tonight. Embrace Downtown Project was talked about, and also investment fees and how that is tracking. Caitlin Kesner talked to us about a cash transfer needed for payroll accounting, and Jeff Spaulding followed it up with a report of our current year appropriation reductions for RC-1-25, Section 6. That and the claims docket comes to the council with a favorable recommendation.
Great. Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Davis, Finance Committee?
Madam President?
Mr. Thurston?
Make a motion to approve the claims as submitted, please.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the claims as submitted. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Thank you. We will move on to miscellaneous item number one. Councils will receive a 2025 report from Noblesville Main Street and Kate Baker.
Thank you, President Wiles, Vice President Davis, City Council members, and Mayor Jensen, for the opportunity to present today. Each year, the city of Noblesville provides extraordinary support for our organization, and it is truly my honor to stand here to express our sincere gratitude and highlight the past year of work from an organization I care so deeply about. Every year, I say that the Noblesville Main Street Board of Directors is anything but ordinary, and I mean it. I often joke that some members devote so much time and energy that they should be on the payroll, but as a nonprofit, a heartfelt smile and thank you has to suffice. What's beautiful is that every member on this roster willingly gives their time, talent, and often personal resource to uplift this community. While I thank them often, I could never thank them enough, yet they continue to show up year after year. We proudly operate with 19 board seats, 15 voting members, and four ex officio members. Our ex officio partners serve as essential connectors from the city of Noblesville, Noblesville Preservation Alliance, Serve Village, and Hamilton County Tourism. Leading a nonprofit board is easy when you have a fully engaged leadership, and this year, I have been fortunate to work with our A-team, President Deanna Leonard, Vice President Bill Russo, Secretary Jennifer DeFranco, and Treasurer Chris Tyson. Their leadership is extraordinary. Our staff is small, just one and a half positions, but when you have someone like Maggie Williams at your side, it feels like a full team. As Farmers Market Manager, Maggie coordinates more than 100 weekly vendors, a live music concert series, a health and wellness series, multiple nonprofit partners, and a Farmers Market Committee. Her dedication to Main Street and this community is remarkable. Last year, because of the support of our partners, we were able to bring her on as a part-time salaried employee, and this year, we were able to offer a living wage increase for 2026. This is possible because of the foundation that you've helped us secure, and we are so deeply grateful. As you follow us on social media, you're seeing the creative work of our board president, Deanna Leonard, who continues to serve as our contracted marketing manager. Thanks to her strategic approach, our following keeps growing. Through consistent, clear messaging, we've become a trusted community resource. We now have nearly 30,000 followers, and that number is growing every day. Noblesville Main Street follows the revitalization strategy of Main Street America, of which we are a proud accredited member, as well as Indiana Main Street under Okra. As I share each year, Main Street America's four-point approach, economic vitality, design, promotion, and organization guides the mission of revitalizing historic communities. Our board brings this approach to life through our committees. The Economic Vitality Committee, led by Chris Tyson, supports the more than 170 businesses within our district. This year, the committee reached new heights by hosting the Downtown Business Summit in partnership with the city. Chris made a dream come true for me when this committee successfully launched our four small business workshops, a new initiative to support businesses beyond our typical community events. The Promotion Committee, led by Patty Johnson and Sarah Camacho, drives engagement through the planning and execution of more than 20 events each year. The Organization Committee, led by myself and Bill Russo, focuses on financial planning, fundraising, and volunteer support. The Design Committee combines with the city's Downtown District Committee and continues to answer that question, what physically defines our historic district? This partnership has been invaluable, and we look forward to our continued participation. The Farmers Market Committee, led by Katie Nernberger, was formed to strengthen the market and expand capacity for special days. This dedicated team helped deliver the Mother's Day brunch, Kids' Days, Dog Days, and even a vendor appreciation luncheon to honor our hardworking vendors. In 2023, Main Street America assigned our transformation strategies, inspire growth, empower business, enhance life. These guide our programming and messaging and will be used to measure our progress, helping us clearly define the why behind our work. We look forward to the Main Street Now Conference every year. It's our chance to connect nationally with Main Street districts across the country. Traditionally, Noblesville Main Street sends the executive director and the vice president of the board. This year, we were elated when we received word that Aaron Head was able to attend as well. We, as always, one of the most common questions I get at this conference is, how do you get such strong support from your city? This year, I didn't just tell them, I introduced them to Aaron. With our team, we were able to divide and conquer, especially in sessions focused on communities going through streetscape projects. Many of those ideas have already influenced our thinking as we prepare for Embrace Downtown. A highlight for me was meeting Mary Means, the founder of Main Street America. After 45 years having started Main Street America in 1980, she still inspires, and as she says, Main Street is the center, the heart and soul of a community, and I couldn't agree more. Noblesville Main Street is incredibly excited for the upcoming Embrace Downtown Project. As construction approaches, we've been discussing how to pivot effectively to support our merchants. Through the Downtown Collaborative Committee, a group I proudly formed in my first year, Aaron Head, Bob Dubois of The Chamber, Aileen McGill of Noblesville Creates, Parks and Rec, and I meet monthly to ensure clear communication and alignment. When planning this year's Downtown Business Summit, it became clear that the focus needed to be Embrace Downtown, specifically the impacts on our business community. Utilizing our Main Street network, we invited our friends from Discover Franklin to join us as panelists, sharing insights from their own large-scale streetscape project. The feedback was incredible, and it was a meaningful way to express our enthusiasm for the project and gratitude for our partnership with the city. We cannot thank you enough for your support. This year, the city provided $40,000 in financial support and more than $70,000 in in-kind support, and despite changing economic conditions, you've awarded the same for 2026. We remain grateful for our use of the Connor Street office, the use of Federal Hill Commons for all 24 weeks of the Farmers Market, and the invaluable assistance from our police, fire, and street departments. One of the greatest gifts we've ever received as an organization is having Patty Johnson, Street Department Commissioner, appointed to our board. She is an outstanding member, a positive and reliable volunteer, and an essential connector. We also want to highlight the incredible partnership we have with Aaron Head, Community Engagement Manager. There is truly no better advocate than Aaron. His presence at meetings, his volunteerism, and his commitment to downtown have strengthened us immensely. Council members, your support is vital. It allows us to grow, serve businesses effectively, and reach more people within and beyond Noblesville. Your partnership fuels our impact, and we thank you. When I launched the Merchant and Business Support Program in 2022, the goal was not just financial investment, but mutual trust and partnership. I wanted contributors to feel they were receiving real value. Merchant supporters received waived vendor fees into our programming, free space at the Farmers Market, a homepage listing, and tags in every First Friday post. What began with 15 businesses has grown to 45 throughout Noblesville. It's my hope that Main Street will continue to earn their trust as we highlight their businesses and strengthen engagement downtown. Here is our financial picture for 2025 so far. Naturally, our largest expenses remain salaries and general operations. Our strongest revenue source continues to be the Farmers Market, which brings in approximately $90,000 through sponsorships and vendor participation. While I usually report strong sponsorship growth, this year brought challenges. In many ways, it was a healthy moment for reflection. We learned where we needed to reassess and pivot. With careful stewardship, we pulled back spending where needed and still delivered meaningful community engagement. Though we didn't grow at the pay-side hoped, we continued to build and strengthen relationships that will last for years. I hope that you've seen the ways that we've soared over the last four years, earning the trust of our partners and community. First Fridays looked a little bit different this year. We reallocated funding based on capacity, volunteer limits, merchant fatigue, and the number of events already happening in downtown. We tested a theory. What if First Fridays didn't need a theme every month? What if simply celebrating Noblesville nightlife was enough? We were nervous. Our mission is to bring people downtown. Would scaling back themes hurt attendance? Using Placer data, we learned the opposite. Attendance held steady or increased in most months, and dwell time rose as well. With shops open late, partner programming from Noblesville Creates, and incredible dining options, First Fridays continued to thrive. This data helped us refine where our resources are most effective. Downtown Noblesville is thriving, and it's only getting better. I want to take a moment to highlight and thank our generous sponsors of the 2025 Noblesville Main Street Farmers Market. Their support made it possible to invite more nonprofit organizations to participate each week at no cost to them. We are deeply grateful for our friends at Duke Energy for their presenting sponsorship, and additional sponsorships by Hometown Window and Door Company and Indiana Restoration and Cleaning Services. We'd also like to show appreciation for the Farmers Market Concert Series sponsors, Skyview Dental and Kickstart Coffee, our Kids' Day sponsor, The Learning Experience of Noblesville, as well as our newest sponsor, Midwest Sport and Spine, for their support of the Get Moving at the Market Wellness Series. It truly takes a village to create something great, and we are so thankful for everyone who helped make the 2025 market a success. Here's a look at the market by the numbers. Our revenue remains consistent, and the modest bump in expenditures reflects the creative efforts of our Farmers Market Committee, which has been focused on new ideas, expanded special days, and that heartfelt thank you to our vendors at the season's end. With Placer data, we've been able to track attendance and wanted to show you the steady increase of guests who travel from near and far to be at our weekly Farmers Market. I'm happy to share that we have more than 50 vendors already confirmed for 2026, and the new year hasn't even begun yet. We've become a familiar face on Fox 59's Indy Now, and each appearance gives us a chance to share not just what's happening downtown, but also sharing the spotlight with our community partners like Noblesville Preservation Alliance, Teeter Organic Farm, the Boys and Girls Club of Noblesville, Hamco Live, and music acts like the Indy Annie's who performed at this year's street dance. This year, we are honored to have Indy Now co-host Ryan Allwart host our Holiday Gala coming up on December 11th. For the third year in a row, Fox 59 joined us for Small Business Saturday coverage, helping highlight five to six businesses each year. These media relationships are incredibly valuable. They help us shine a spotlight on downtown and our partners, expanding our reach beyond just local awareness. Although we are reaching the end of the year, Noblesville Main Street isn't slowing down just yet. There's still so much to look forward to, including our final events of the year, Deck the Downtown on December 5th, our Holiday Market on December 6th, and that Holiday Gala on December 11th. These events are opportunities to bring the community together and celebrate downtown spirit as we head into the holiday season, and we hope that you'll join us. Well, we've come to the end, and honestly, it's the part I have been dreading the most. On October 4th, I celebrated my fourth year in this role, and on October 17th, we shared the news of my departure at the end of the year. If you'll allow me just a quick moment to personally express my sincere gratitude to you all. Some of you have been along with me on this ride for four years. We've gathered at community events. We've met for lunch to take a deep dive into how we can best serve our community. we can best serve our community, and we have shown everyone that we really are better together. Mayor Johnson, my first birthday fundraiser on November 3rd, 2022, I received a $1,000 donation from you. A few minutes later, I was notified of a second $1,000 donation from you. I immediately picked up the phone and said, hey, did you mean to give us $2,000? You confidently replied, I did not. I laughed, and before I could talk refund, you said, but, I don't want a refund. I want you to take this as just how much I and we as a community believe in you. I took that to heart. It wasn't just a generous donation. It was a vote of confidence and the inspiration I needed to stand tall and lead. I was a lion who at the time was only chase-curious, but on that day, I began my sprint. I was ready to build a staff and create a Main Street that no one had ever seen before. But what I've had to come to terms with is that, in the end, my job wasn't going to be focused on high growth. My role was going to be to heal, repair, and strengthen Noblesville Main Street. I wanted the community to know us by name, by event, and I wanted them to feel a part of it. Through us, I wanted them to know our business owners and the pride we have in our history, our traditions, and our ability to look to the future at the same time. With my team of dynamic, engaged, and giving Board members, we created stabilization. I hope you'll agree that I am leaving this organization better than I found it, and I am beaming with pride for the organization I will hand to the next person. We are in final interviews. I was blown away by the caliber of talent we had apply for this position, and that is all kudos to the team that has worked so hard to make us stronger, to make us shine, and to be an organization that allows everyone to belong. Thank you, council members, for believing in me through sitting through my two-long presentations and allowing me to serve in a role that I've cherished for the community that made me who I am. With all my heart, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just left. Did you need me today?
Nope. Do we have any questions for Kate? Actually, any questions?
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kate.
Right. Okay, to follow up on that, we're going to go to Council to Consider the Utility Department's 2026 Budgetary Forecast, and Jonathan Margot.
If you thought that was fun, buckle up. Jonathan Margot, Noblesville Utilities, Honorable Members of the Council, Madam President, I'm here to present you our annual utilities, our forecast revenue and expenses, our budgetary forecast for the year going into '26. I'm going to start this a little bit backwards. We're going to jump into expenses, which is the most fun part that we have. You guys all have these packets in your possession. This is all, we'd already gone over this with the committee, as Councilman Johnson had said. There are some minor updates that happened after the committee, based on comments that came out of that committee meeting. The bottom line is our budget expenses increased by 2.9% year-over-year. That is in line with, if you remember the last time we came up with a four-year revenue increase, rate increase, that over the eight-year period of which we've done two four-year increases, we had come over at approximately 3% year-over-year increase. So this 2.9, while it seems like on face value, it is higher than what the Civil City had targeted as a 1% increase year-over-year, it is in line with our rates and the rate structure that we had put into place. It should be, I have a couple more things. Do you want to share that the, there was not a cost-of-living adjustment to stick, stay in line with the department? There was no department-wide salary cost-of-living adjustment in accordance with the citywide policy. We did follow that. It was a very unique occurrence with 2026 that there's 27 pay periods. I had to look it up. That happens once every 11 years. Apparently, you get one extra day a year, and leap years add in too, so 11 years. Moving into our revenues, this is more for public record again. You guys already have all this information. This is just showing that our revenues and expenses do balance for the year. And importantly, then, we want to show the exciting projects, capital projects that we have coming up. We have a lot of work to invest into the system that's ahead of us. To help support the funding for this, we are moving toward a bond in 2026 to pay for two very large projects. The Build, Operate, Transfer Project for the Headworks Rehabilitation, which is in the order of around $10 million, and the Lift Station 20 Replacement and Very Large Force Main that'll go all the way from that lift station, all the three miles, to the wastewater treatment plant. That project is running around $16 million right now. We're evaluating whether we move forward with a very strong cash match into a bond right now, somewhere in the realm of 20% to 35% cash upfront is what we're looking at. So I think that's very strong showing, but it's reflective of our strong cash holdings that we have at this time. Also, I think it's important to note that our Moody's Bond Rating did increase this year from AA2 to AA1. According to our accountant, we're the highest utility bond, that's the highest utility bond rating in Indiana. Hard to believe. If it's not right, we can blame Bicker Tilly. Are there any questions on these projects? And you can see where, at the bottom, you can see where some of this funding sources where we're looking at. We're still spending down an existing bond, evaluating another bond to come to its place that will likely not be fully spent down next year, but will be largely spent down. And then some spend down of cash of our growth funds and as well as just the capital holdings that we have. I know one thing that everyone's very excited about is all the work that we're doing for odor control, which we are, I just want to share that there is no real singular project that we're looking at to remediate odor because it's a dispersed system. So we have increased our preventative cleaning and flushing schedules. We're probably not where we need to be. You know, it's a moving target, right? It's a moving issue, so it's kind of hard to nail down. If there's anyone in the community, feel free to call in and complain. That's fine. It helps us kind of target where the issues are and the frequency of the issues. Also, we're working with a consultant who's an odor control specialist and working to move forward. While they've supported us on a couple of the projects in particular, we're also moving forward with a planning study, a system-wide odor study, and a, looking at a baseline dataset where to evaluate improvements. And are these projects that we're going to bring onboard going to make some improvements, and how can we measure those? And this is a leading goal in several priority projects, including our Headworks Rehab, the Lift Station 20, as well as Embrace Downtown. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions of Mr. Margot? Mr. Johnson?
Yeah, Mr. Margot.
Yes.
If you could reiterate, as you did for us in committee, to the rest of the council, the funding sources we have for wastewater, how they differ from the general funds that the city civil receives?
Sure.
And the impact from Senate Enrolled Act I?
Absolutely. As I understand, much of the Civil City funds, particularly with those, particularly the ones impacted by the Enrolled Act I, are really related to property taxes and the amount of property taxes that will then go to Civil City funds. We are completely separate from that. We're considered a different enterprise from the Civil City. So all of our funding comes primarily from sewer rates, and we'll be speaking to you about, so people who pay sewer rates pay a sewer and stormwater into that system. There are going to be some, there's some growth areas on the fringes of the community who are going to be in our stormwater area, who will not be paying us a sewer rate. So we will be coming and speaking to you soon in the coming months about a specialized sewer rate just for those people. If you pay a sewer rate to the utility, everything will be the same. We also have connection fees, tap-on fees. So when I mentioned the growth fund, we really keep those tap-on fees. Anytime there's a new home or a new business that will send additional flows to us, we treat those funds as restricted funds. We really want growth to fund growth. What we don't want is growth to fund operations, and operations to use growth as a crutch, and then we find ourselves at some point when, if growing ever slows down, but surely eventually will, we have limited amount of land, that we find that we then need to update rates. I think in detail communicating that in a detailed manner to the rating agency, I think is really what, a big part of what increased our rating and the confidence that they had in our financial approaches.
Thank you.
You have any other questions related to that that I didn't get into?
No, just the fact that they're completely separate revenue streams.
Completely separate, and yes, nothing that would happen with the property taxes, it all relates to either of those two primary funding sources. So the sewer rates had already been set a year and a half ago, and that was set for a four-year period. We're not even to the middle of that four-year period, so we have no intention of raising those rates until we reach the end of that four-year period.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Council to receive a report of authorization to reduce appropriations per Resolution RC-1-25. This was included in our packet. We have no action on this, but just acknowledging receipt of that information. So now we'll move on to previously discussed ordinances. Council to consider ordinance number 44-11-25, an ordinance approving an additional appropriation to use the receipt of Hamilton County tourism funding to pay a portion of the bond repayment for the arena at Innovation Mile. Mr. McDonald, good evening.
Madam President, members of the council, Tom McDonald, Deputy Financial Officer. So the purpose of this ordinance is to appropriate revenue that the city has received from the county inkeber's tax, and this has resulted from an increase in that tax that was approved by the state. And as part of the agreement we've entered in with the county, we are using this funding for bond repayment obligations on the arena at Innovation Mile. One of the benefits of doing that is it frees up TIF revenue to use for other investment purposes. And we discussed this adjustment at the November 18th council meeting, and I don't have any changes or additional updates to add to the record.
Any questions or comments for Mr. McDonald? Okay, this is a matter for a public hearing, so I will open this public hearing for ordinance number 44-11-25.
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
Seeing nobody come forward, I move to close the public hearing for ordinance number 44-11-25.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to close the public hearing for ordinance number 44-11-25. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero.
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to approve, I move to approve ordinance number 44-11-25.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 44-11-25. This is a roll-call vote. Ms. Lees.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you very much. Council to consider ordinance number 45-11-25, an ordinance authorizing the issuance of bonds for financing construction of Phase One of the Embrace Downtown project. Skrupski.
Good evening, council. In front of you is a bond authorization ordinance for Embrace Downtown Phase One. This was introduced to you guys at your last meeting. There have been no changes since that time to the ordinance nor to the cost. As a reminder, this bond does authorize up to a $6.5 million bond, depending on the cost of the project that we'll not raise. Again, all estimates do include a contingency in them, so we should come in lower than the total amount of funding that we have authorized for this. This will all be funded out of our, the debt service will all be funded out of food and beverage revenues. So again, the bond has a funding mechanism that we've been planning for a long time. If you have any questions, let me know.
Any questions, Mr. Skrupski?
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to approve ordinance number 45-11-25.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number 45-11-25 as presented. This is a roll-call vote. Ms. Lees.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mr. Elliott.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Thurston.
Aye.
Mr. Boyce.
Aye.
Ms. Wiles.
Aye.
Nine ayes, zero nays. The ordinance is approved.
Thank you. Moving on to new ordinances for discussion. Council to consider ordinance number 46-12-25, an ordinance for tax amendments to Section 30 of the Code of Ordnances of the City of Noblesville, Indiana.
Moved into this.
Second.
Mr. Light.
Thank you, President Wiles, council members, Matt Light, Deputy Mayor. Presenting to you a recommended change that's probably overdue in some of the City of Noblesville ordinances. This goes back a long ways, but there's a provision that exists currently that excludes the Maintenance Department from the list of appointed officials that are subject to appointment by the mayor. We felt like after this was brought to our attention and consideration of the responsibilities, really the growing responsibilities that the Maintenance Department handles on behalf of the city and the number of facilities and grounds and buildings that are very important to our operations, that it would be appropriate to put that position on the same plane as other department heads. So that's what this proposal would do.
Great. Any questions, Mr. Light? Okay, we'll see you in two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Council to consider ordinance number 47-12-25, an ordinance approving an additional appropriation of investment fees across multiple funds and establishing a public hearing.
Moved into this.
Second.
Mr. McDonald.
Again, Tom McDonald, Deputy Financial Officer. So this ordinance would establish the appropriation authority to pay for the brokerage fees that are associated with the investment of certain reserve balances for certain city funds. And when the 2025 budget was adopted, it did not include a budget for these fees. We are still relatively new in pursuing an investment strategy for the city, and we are getting better at how we budget for these fees and want to do so in a transparent manner. But in saying that, I think that this item highlights something positive for the city because over the past 12 months, our investment earnings have totaled $1.4 million, and even netting out the fees involved with that, that's $325,000 more than we would have earned just in our checking account, which is what we were doing. So it is, again, something positive, we think, for the city, but we just have to establish the budget for the fees. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Mr. McDonald?
No questions. They went through that in finance, and it's just really impressive, the work that they've put into investing tax-free dollars wisely. It's great.
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to establish a public hearing for ordinance number 47-12-25 at our next regular meeting.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to establish a public hearing for ordinance number 47-12-25 at our next regular meeting. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to transfers. Council to consider transfer TA-08-25, an appropriation transfer to support Embrace Downtown Design Services. Tom McDonald.
Again, for the record, Tom McDonald, Deputy Financial Officer. And this is an appropriation transfer that totals close to $700,000 in the street improvement and rehabilitation budget. And this would support, further support the engineering services that are required for the Embrace Downtown project, and in particular for the construction inspection activities. And Crossroad Engineers has been selected to coordinate the Phase One construction inspection, and that service agreement went through the border works this morning. The transfer itself has two components. One is a transfer just across expenditure series within the same department from capital outlay to services and other charges. That's really a technical part of that to, you know, the capitalities for the construction component, but that's not happening, it's for the services. So that has to be budgeted in the services and other charges budget. But $324,000 is being transferred from the Fire Department. There was an appropriation in the adopted budget to support land acquisition for Fire Station 78. That acquisition isn't going to happen in 2025. It is still planned and will happen in 2026. So this is just reallocating a portion of that funding for Embrace Downtown. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. McDonald?
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to approve transfer TA-08-25.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve transfer TA-08-25. It has been moved and seconded to approve transfer TA-08-25 as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Council to Consider Transfer TA-09-25, an appropriation transfer across departments for the deposit for the Carousel Project at Forest Park. Mr. McDonald.
Again, for the record, Tom McDonald, Deputy Financial Officer. So this is an appropriation transfer to, again, pay for the, part of the cost of purchasing a new carousel to replace the existing one at Forest Park. This purchase comes after extensive research that the city has, has done on carousels and having one as a community asset, and also the feasibility of replacing the existing one at Forest Park. And the city has determined that the cost to repair the, the current one would outweigh the cost of replacing it. So it would be less expensive to replace it, and importantly, to maintain on an ongoing basis. It is hard to find parts for the existing one due to the age of the mechanics, and they're also very costly. So the Parks Department has identified a company that specializes in building new carousels, and one, again, would be easy to make, much easier to maintain on an ongoing basis. This company can mimic the historic and antique style that were custom to with the current carousel, and could even factor in certain design choices that Noblesville would want. Total price is $473,000. To lock that in, it's required a department or a deposit of $173,000. So that's what this transfer supports. And again, part of, this is funded through the reallocation of the funding for Fire Station 78, land acquisition for Fire Station 78. So it's the other part of that funding that's supporting this transfer.
Questions, Mr. McDonald on this one? Yes. Charlie.
I guess my only question is, and this might be a Parks question, so my apologies in advance. Is there a plan for the current carousel, to your knowledge?
That question did come up, and I think, I'm not sure that that is settled. I would defer to maybe Mr. Light and help with that.
We asked the same question.
Yeah, we discussed it at Thursday's committee.
Sure.
Yes, sir. Matt Light, Deputy Mayor. Thanks, Councilor Elliott, for the question. Yes, there is, there were some conditions attached to the donation from the individual in the first instance, and that included us operating it so long as we were able to. If we weren't able to, to either return it to him or to find another location that might want to repair it and put it in continued operation. So those discussions are ongoing.
Existing stipulations. Okay, got it. That makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Madam President, the only comment I was going to make, just so the record's clear, as Tom mentioned on the previous transfer, it is still intended to acquire the land that this transfer from the fire is going for, just not, and it's going to happen this year, so it's still our plan to do that in the future.
Any questions?
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to approve transfer TA-09-25.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve transfer TA-09-25 as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. Council to Consider Transfer TC-01-25, a cash transfer between the General Fund and the Payroll Clearing Fund. Caitlin Kestner.
Good evening, Caitlin Kestner, Deputy Controller. So this is actually a cash transfer, which is different than what you usually see from Tom, which are budget transfers. So I am requesting that we transfer $2 million from the General Fund to the Payroll Clearing Fund. The purpose of this transfer is not for the money to actually be spent, but it's to act as a sort of overdraft protection. So I recently took over overseeing the payroll department and have made some significant, I believe, positive changes, one of which is a complete overhaul of our accounting and paying of payroll. So this is, it's possible that this could result in some very short, like, day or two periods where payroll has been paid out of the payroll bank account but has not yet been transferred from the General Fund, Parks Funds, or wastewater fund. And as a result, without this transfer, the balance could go negative, and that would incur fees, which we obviously would like to avoid. This $2 million was calculated using a slightly high estimate of one pay period of payroll taxes and internal service costs in order to avoid any scenarios where we could overdraw. And our bank accounts are actually designed such that the payroll bank account's balance earns interest that is paid to the operating bank account and is deposited in the General Fund. So the General Fund is not missing out on any interest earnings by making this transfer at all. It's just providing us that protection for that short time period where we could have that deficit while we're working on some backend calculations to get everything squared away. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, Miss Kestner?
Madam President.
Mr. Davis.
I move to approve transfer TC-01-25.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded to approve transfer TC-01-25 as presented. This is a hand vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Nine zero. That brings us to council comments. Mr. Johnson.
Yes, I have been wanting, like to thank the 1,900 or so smiling faces that joined the mayor, Deputy Mayor Light, John Hughes, Aaron Smith, several council members for the Thanksgiving Morning Turkey Trot, and the continued 18th year, the support from the city this year was, was phenomenal. We certainly couldn't do what we can or what we do for Riley Children's Hospital without the city's support. And a special shout-out to the, to the Police Department and to the Street Department for their continuing support of the project. So thank you all, and see you next year.
Very quickly, Madam President. Just a quick birthday shout-out, because I told him I'd give him one. My brother Chase Elliott's birthday is today. He turned 30. He's been really instrumental in our Sister Cities program, was a past president of Sister Cities, and has been really instrumental in continuing to foster the relationship with Chief Adella and Nova Prada, and I just wanted to thank him and wish him another good year. Happy birthday, Chase.
We're not going to sing, though. Ms. Lees.
Madam President, I have made an oversight. I should have put on this agenda notification that there are several appointments that will be expiring at the end of the year. At your next meeting, you'll be voting on them. I have given you the information on the appointments, so I just wanted to make sure we mentioned that.
Great. We're contacting people who have currently serving on those councils or committees to see if they're interested in continuing that service, and then we'll be able to confirm those names and bring it to this group at our next meeting. Thank you. With that, anything else? Right, we are adjourned.